Subject to this exemption to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission must make findings by majority vote no later than 30 days after it starts using the exemption and every 30 days thereafter, and will do so at this meeting and until the governor lists the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours, which are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. I should note that City Hall is now closed for lunch between 12:00 and 1:00 p.m. The planning and building counter has different hours, so please check or make an appointment before visiting. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville Planning Commission webpage and clicking on the link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9 on your phone. The Zoom call-in information was provided on posted agenda as well as via e-notification and on social media. At this time, Chair Chaff, I would like to go to item 3.1 and ask for a motion to approve the resolution declaring the need for the Planning Commission to continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public, which contains the required AB 361 findings.
Wonderful. Would anyone like to make the motion?
Sure, so moved.
And a second?
I second it.
All right. On the motion made by Commissioner Henry and seconded by Commissioner Dram, Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghizoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Seven ayes, the resolution is approved.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. So Charlie, back over to you for item 3.2, calendar.
Sure. Let me see. Okay. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, this is the proposed calendar for 2023. The Planning Commission meeting dates are over here on the right-hand side. That's really the only date you need to be concerned about, other than the packet delivery date, which is typically a week before the meeting. That's when you can expect to receive your packets. The rest of these dates here are all internal processing dates, seminal deadlines, and things like that. So this schedule reflects the roster that has been approved by the City Council and the practice that we've followed for years, which is that the meetings are on the fourth Thursday of the month of January through October, and on the second Thursday of December, with no meeting in November because the fourth Thursday of November by definition is Thanksgiving. I will note that major religious observances and city holidays have been taken into account in developing this schedule. There are no Planning Commission meetings that would fall on any city holidays, and where there are city holidays that affect other dates on this calendar, they have been adjusted according to this. So with that, I would like to request a motion to approve the schedule for 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
That was Commissioner Simon, I mean Vice Chair Simon, making the motion, and Commissioner Henry, I believe, seconded that?
Yes.
All right, I will take this down now. On the motion to approve the calendar, Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghizoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Seven ayes, the schedule for 2023 is approved. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. All right, moving right along, we will now go to item number four, public comment. So we'll now take public comment on any matters within the commission's purview that are not on tonight's agenda. Charlie, can you please read the general public comments section of the script?
Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on this agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9 on your phone. At this time, I will check to see if I have received any online comment cards. For general public comments, I have not. We do have one attendee who wishes to speak, Don Hockett. So I will allow him to unmute. And go ahead, please.
Good evening, Chair and Emeryville Planning Commissioners. My name is Don Hockett, and I'm a field rep with the NorCal Carpenters Union Local 713 in Alameda County. I'm speaking on behalf of approximately 37,000 carpenters, brothers and sisters throughout Northern California, including thousands in Alameda County and Emeryville. What are area standards for labor, you may ask? It is apprenticeship, healthcare, local hire, and a livable wage. A livable wage with medical and retirement benefits that allows workers and their families to live in the communities they work in. This also means those wages will be reinvested back in the local economic community as they spend their earnings, and their tax dollars will help fund local schools and government. A commitment to accredited apprenticeship programs to guarantee we will continue to have a trained, skilled, and experienced workforce that is able to complete high-quality projects in a safe and timely manner. This provides opportunities not just for a job on this project, but a career path for many brothers and sisters who have or will go through apprenticeship programs in Alameda County. By adding area standard labor to the city's prequalification language, you will show your consistence that you value not just the city, but also the brothers and sisters building the city itself. I would very much like to have a real and valuable conversation with each and every one of you, as well as the developers listening in, on how you can cultivate a prosperous construction industry in Alameda County. The NorCal carpenters have thousands of members in Alameda County, and with each one of them can be a great asset to any future projects you plan. I look forward to talking to you more about this with you in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for the comment and for keeping it under three minutes, which I think we forgot to say is what we usually do. So Charlie, any other comment cards or raised hands that you see?
I do not see any other raised hands. Let me just double-check my email again for any last-minute comment cards. I have not received any.
Okay, great. So we'll now close the public comment period, and we can move on to agenda item five, which is approval of the action minutes from August 25. Do any commissioners have any comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Henry and seconded by Commissioner Ghizoni to approve the action minutes of the August 25 meeting. Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghizoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Seven ayes, the action minutes are approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next, we're going to move on to expertise communications and conflicts of interest. So if you, any commissioners have any expertise communications related? Yep, go ahead.
I believe you skipped the development, Community Development Director's report.
I did, and not a reflection of my interest level. Please go ahead, Charlie. Number six, Community Development Director's report.
Thank you very much. I'm afraid it's a little lengthier than last month, since there were no City Council meetings last month to speak of, but there were two this month, and they were on September 6th and September 20th. On September 6th, the council held a study session to review and provide direction on the proposed scope of work for a comprehensive street tree audit and a roadmap to future expansion of Emeryville's street tree inventory. This effort is being spearheaded by the Public Works Department and elements of it will be incorporated into our objective development standards. The council authorized the city manager to accept funds and execute a funding agreement with the California Transportation Commission for a $1.374 million active transportation planning grant for the redesign of 40th Street. The design concept, which was approved by the City Council in 2020, includes bus-only lanes and a two-way cycle track on the north side of 40th Street. This grant, combined with other grants already received, will fully fund the design phase of the project. An RFP for Design Services for the project was issued in August, with proposals due tomorrow, September 23rd. The council passed the second reading of an ordinance approving a lease disposition and development agreement and the related grant lease for the development and operation of an intergenerational affordable housing project at 4300 San Pablo Avenue by EAH Incorporated. And the council reviewed the proposed application for a pro-housing designation that the commission reviewed at your July meeting. The council authorized staff to submit the application to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and directed staff to seek as many points as possible in the application. On September 20th, the meeting began with the mayor reading a couple of proclamations. One was in recognition of Emeryville City Clerk Sherry Hearts upon the occasion of her retirement, and the other was in recognition of Sharon Wiltshire's contributions to the Emeryville community and ongoing efforts as an artist and arts advocate for over 30 years. In a related agenda item, the council approved the naming of the Bus Shelter Temporary Art Program in Sharon Wiltshire's honor, and acknowledged the Public Art Committee's recommendation to commission a plaque honoring Sharon Wiltshire, and reestablished the City Council Subcommittee on the city's recognition policy by appointing Mayor Bowers and Vice Mayor Medina to the Subcommittee. The council approved a professional services contract with Urban Clinic Partners for preparation of a CECL compliant document for the proposed 5801 Christie Avenue Mixed Juice Project. As the commission may recall, you held study sessions on this project on January 27th and July 28th this year, and the third study session is tentatively scheduled for your December 8th meeting. The council approved the mayor's signing of a letter in support of resources for community development's application for infill infrastructure grant program funding for the, from the California Department of Housing and Community Development for the Nellian and Gateway 100% Affordable Housing Project at 3600 San Pablo Avenue. Staff approved the project administratively on October 20th, 2020, under SB 35, and a building permit application was submitted on November 30th of last year and is currently under review. The council unanimously approved amendments to the planned unit development, preliminary development plan, and development agreement for the Marketplace redevelopment project. As the commission will recall, at your last meeting on August 25th, you voted unanimously to recommend that the council approve these amendments. The council made no change to the amendments as proposed. The ordinances making these amendments will be coming back to the council for second reading on October 4th, and the commission is scheduled to consider the final development plan for the project at your next meeting on October 27th. And finally, the council discussed possible exemptions for laboratories and restaurants from the proposed reach code requirements that all new construction be all-electric. The council directed that laboratories be exempt, but that restaurants not be exempt. These proposed reach code requirements will be incorporated into the triannual code update that is scheduled for consideration by the council in the next few months. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Charlie. There's a lot going on. Does anyone have a question for Charlie? Okay, seeing no questions, I will now move on to expertise communications and conflicts of interest. This will probably be short this month, but does anyone have any expertise communications related to items on the agenda, or would like to identify anything that they would like to recuse from? Okay, seeing nothing, we will move on to our public hearing, 8.1 Sidewalk Cafe and Parklet Regulation Amendments. This is our only major item tonight, so I did not see any expertise communications or conflicts of interest identified before, just checking one more time. Nope. Okay, great. So then, Charlie, can you please start the staff presentation?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Chaff. I'm going to share my screen, and hopefully this will work. Can everyone see that all right?
Yep.
All right, so these are planning regulation amendments related to sidewalk cafes and parklets. So by way of background, on June 16th of 2020, the City Council adopted ordinance number 2001-6, the so-called COVID-outdoor dining ordinance, which temporarily waived or modified certain provisions of the planning regulations for sidewalk cafes and parklets. It expired one year after its effective date, that is on August 6th, 2021. On June 21st, 2022, the council passed ordinance number 22-004, which modified the expiration date of ordinance 20-101-6 to be 180 days after the end of the state of emergency. In other words, they reactivated the previous ordinance and declared that it was still in effect until the governor lists the state of emergency and 180 days after that. And that ordinance also declared that any outdoor dining facilities that were approved under ordinance 2001-6 remain valid and conforming. On May 3rd of this year, the council discussed making the provisions of ordinance number 2001-6 permanent and initiated an amendment to the planning regulations to be brought back to the, to be brought to the Planning Commission for a public hearing and a recommendation to council, and this is that public hearing. These are the outdoor dining facilities that were approved under ordinance number 20-01-6. The stars are temporary use permits for outdoor dining on private property, and the circles and squares are sidewalk cafes and parklets in the public right-of-way. The yellow stars are outdoor dining facilities that are no longer operating, and the green ones are outdoor or dining that is still operating, although of course Ruby's Canfield Cafe unfortunately is not, although I do hear it's going to reopen next month, hopefully, so that's good news. The, but we're focusing on sidewalk cafes and parklets tonight, so not the stars, just the squares and the circles. We have one parklet that was approved and built, and that's at Doyle Street Cafe, and we have one sidewalk cafe at Los Moles. I would note that Los Moles had also applied for a parklet, however, it was not approved because there were some fire code issues, and they chose not to pursue it, so they only just opened the sidewalk cafe. So these are a couple of pictures of that sidewalk cafe at Los Moles, and this is a picture of the parklet that is at Doyle Street Cafe. So here's what the proposed amendments would consist of. For sidewalk cafes, we would eliminate the existing provisions that require the removal of furnishings each day, providing that the furnishings are adequately secured, and we would eliminate the provision that prohibits bars from having sidewalk cafes. In other words, bars could have sidewalk cafes, provided that the bar provides full meal service either from its own kitchen or by contract with another vendor. For parklets, we would eliminate the requirement for transportation committee review prior to City Council approval. The City Council would still have to view and approve parklets, but the transportation committee would not. We'd also eliminate the provision that does not allow the exclusive use of a parklet by an adjacent restaurant or bar. Similar to a sidewalk cafe, the feeling is that if, if a restaurant or bar goes to the trouble and expense of building a parklet, that they ought to have the use of it for their patrons. Also, we'd eliminate the provision that says you can't have table service in a parklet, so you could have table service in a parklet. And then we would, we would eliminate the provision that, a current provision that prohibits service and consumption of alcohol in a parklet. It is allowed currently in a sidewalk cafe under certain conditions, and assuming those same conditions were met in a parklet, then the service and consumption of alcohol would be likewise allowed in a parklet. In general, we would clarify a couple of things. One, that compliance with the ADA and the City of Emeryville Building Code accessibility provisions is required unless it's expressly waived or modified, and that no separate encroachment permit is required for a parklet. All the standard provisions that would be included in an encroachment permit would be included in the sidewalk cafe permit, and so the sidewalk cafe permit would serve as the encroachment permit without requiring a separate encroachment permit. There are also several other modifications that are basically cleanup or relatively minor things or clarifications. One is that the term restaurant throughout the regulations would be replaced with eating and drinking establishment. Eating and drinking establishment is a broader term. It includes restaurants, but it also includes bars and food trucks, either of which might also want to have a sidewalk cafe or a parklet, and as long as they met all of the requirements, there's no reason why they couldn't. We would also clarify that sidewalk cafes and parklets are only allowed in zoning districts where eating and drinking establishments are allowed, because why would you allow them where you don't have eating and drinking establishments? Sidewalk cafe, that term is replaced by the term sidewalk cafe or parklet throughout the regulations to clarify that these regulations apply to parklets as well as sidewalk cafes. We've added a provision for restoration of the roadway after the removal of a parklet. We already have a provision that requires the restoration of the sidewalk after a sidewalk cafe is removed, and this is simply a similar provision for parklets. We'd add a new provision requiring sidewalk cafes and parklets to provide access to underground utilities at the permit's sole expense, meaning that if East Bay Motte or PG&amp;A or the city had underground utilities underneath a sidewalk or a parklet and needed to get at them for service or repairs or whatever, that the sidewalk cafe or parklet would have to be either partially or completely removed to allow that access, and then, of course, it could be replaced, but all of that would be at the permit's sole expense, if not be at the utility company's expense. Community Development Director and Planning Division titles have been updated. The current code has old outdated terms, so we fixed that. And finally, pronouns have been replaced by gender neutral terms, that is, they, they're. These are the findings that are required to be made for amending the planning regulations. Staff believes that these findings can be made as articulated in the resolution that is before you. Concerning environmental review, these proposed amendments are exempt under State CECL Guidelines Section 15301, which applies to minor alterations to existing facilities with negligible expansion of use, and also the common sense exemption, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that this proposal may have a significant effect on the environment. So with that, our recommendation is that you open a public hearing and take testimony on the proposed resolution regarding these amendments to the planning regulations, close the public hearing, consider the staff report and the proposed resolution, and adopt the resolution approving the proposed amendments to the planning regulations and recommending that the City Council adopt the amendments. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Are there any clarifying questions for Charlie from the commission?
I have a question about potential liability on the part of the city for use by a private entity in a public space.
We have a provision in our existing sidewalk cafe regulations that addresses that issue. We're not amending that, but I believe it requires them to indemnify the city, and that has been in place ever since the sidewalk cafe regulations have been in place, and it applies to parklets also.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wax, go ahead.
One quick question, has the idea, like cannabis dining establishment's been considered in these regulations? Do those just fall under restaurants?
I'm not sure what that is. We don't have a use classification for that. We have cannabis retail sales and cannabis manufacturing. What is cannabis dining, if I may ask?
I could swear one of our, one of our dispensary owners was going to open one. It's basically where you're serving food with cannabis products added to it, so.
Oh, oh, that's the Broken Rack, used to be the Broken Rack. It's Ohana, they moved across the street from where they used to be. The dispensary there and the restaurant operation are separate and distinct, and I think you can't, I think they both have separate entrances. I believe there are state regulations about this, and so you can't go directly from one under the other, you have to go outside first. Regarding whether they serve cannabis-laced brownies or whatever in the restaurant, I really don't know.
I haven't been there yet. I understood that was what they were going to do, so.
Well, I mean, provided it, it falls, follows up the regulations for a restaurant, there isn't any reason why it could also occur in a sidewalk cafe or a parklet.
Okay.
Any other questions? I had a question, Charlie. There is a mention in the materials in the packet about mobile food vendors as an example, and I kind of had that in mind while reading through it, and then there was a part that says Section 9-5.1503 has been modified to clarify that it's only permitted in eating and drinking established, in areas where eating and drinking establishments are permitted or conditionally are permitted, and I was wondering how that related to mobile food vendors? Would that preclude mobile food vendors from being considered?
No, it would not. Mobile food vendors fall under eating and drinking establishments. It's one of the subheadings of eating and drinking establishments.
Great. That was my only question. Okay, I don't see any other questions right now, so let's move on to public comments. Charlie, could you please read the public comment part of the script?
Certainly. Can I get it here? Now is the time for the public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes, wishes to comment at the public hearing related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9 on your phone. So I will check. I did receive a online speaker card a few days ago on this item. I do not see any raised hands among the attendees, so with your permission, Chair Chaff, I will read that, assuming you have opened the public hearing.
I, yes, I was just going to do that. The public hearing is open at 6:59, and I would, yes, be very happy for you to read that speaker card.
Thank you. Let me just find it here. Okay, this is from Laura McNamee. She says, "I support the resolution to make the parklets and sidewalk cafes open during the pandemic permanent. I'm not ready to eat indoors yet, and outdoor dining allows me to safely enjoy Emeryville's many terrific restaurants. I have a more personal reason for supporting parklets. I live across the street from the Doyle Street Cafe, which added a parklet during the pandemic. The cafe's outdoor seating has added vitality to our neighborhood. During the hours the restaurant is open, our block bubbles with happy voices of the people enjoying our lovely local eatery. I suspect that the outside seating has allowed more people to discover the Doyle Street Cafe, as it seems more popular than ever. I'm grateful that the parklet allowed this vital neighborhood institution to stay afloat. It fed us a lot during the pandemic and prospered. I can't imagine my block without the cafe's parklet. It adds to the quality of my community life, and I hope it and other outdoor seating arrangements in Emeryville can become permanent." And that concludes her comment. Let me just double-check to see if I've received any further online speaker cards. I have not, and I do not see any raised hands among the attendees.
Okay, great. Then we will close the public hearing at 7:01, thanking Laura McNamee for her comment. And now we'll bring this back to the commission for deliberating. And now we'll bring this back to the commission for deliberation. Does anyone want to go first with any questions about the findings or comments on the findings or just observations that they wanted to share?
Just a quick comment. It's such a shame that it took a pandemic for us to realize how nice parklets are. So it seems like something that has very little downside, and I'm curious if any of the commissioners are aware of some of the downsides, I guess besides losing one or two parking spaces in each instance.
I think the one downside of parklets is that they do reduce the visibility of storefronts. Depends on the design. As you know, some parklets put up some pretty high edges or, and so they can block the storefronts. And so sometimes it's harder to see the stores behind. And so sometimes a parklet can block a retail shop or something that's next door or nearby. That's not the case in the Emeryville situation, but in other locations around the city, I have seen that. So I think that's the one downside, but I agree with you that I think they're a great asset to have, and they definitely activate the street and contribute to pedestrian life.
That's a good point.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wax, if you had anything else to add.
No, I think that was a good point that Rod made. And yeah, I've generally seen parklets where they're pretty low, so you get this nice visibility to see the business. You can see the people dining. You know, bikers don't feel like they're going by this like wall. And maybe that type of height recommendation or guideline at a later date could become something that is provided as a recommendation or suggestion to people seeking a parklet.
Great. You know, just to respond, Commissioner Moore, to your question about downsides, I mean, the one thing that I've had in mind is that I've heard from members of communities that use the, that are dependent on sidewalk access, for example, for wheelchair access or other disabled access, that it's really important to make sure that that access is continued if there's a parklet or some other sort of, you know, something else going on on the sidewalk. And in some cases, I think in other cities, that didn't happen as well. You know, there were cases where it was really hard for people in wheelchairs to pass through. And so I was watching for that in these modifications. And I'll just go ahead, since I'm talking already, this was the main thing I was going to share, is that I saw it in two different places where it sets out that a four-foot width of sidewalk needs to be kept open. And then also there was a part that, you know, specifically calls out ADA compliance. And so that's what makes me comfortable with supporting these amendments. Does anyone else have any other feedback to share? Yeah, Commissioner Ghazani, go ahead.
Yes, second was what Commissioner Moore and me said, and I also was concerned about the ADA issues that can be present because I've seen situations where it really impaired people's mobility. One thing that I had noticed in this was there's a prohibition in Section 9-5.1504 on outdoor cooking or food preparation in the area. And I see food preparation in other places, such as over at Rosa's Cafe in Temescal. And there's a cafe or a restaurant with a parklet where they do sidewalk barbecuing. And I think those things are kind of magnets for people, and if managed properly, that could also add to this. I don't see why we necessarily would prohibit that in this sort of environment. One other place that seemed to do it just fine. But overall, I think creating more public or semi-public space is a great idea.
I would just comment on that, that provision exists already in the code concerning sidewalk cafes and parklets, actually, and we're not proposing to amend that. It isn't an issue that really was discussed at all by the city council. And since it was already in the code, I wouldn't be proposing to amend it. It was just, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't an issue of discussion at this point. But that could certainly be amended in the future if that's the will of the commission and council.
Charlie, could that be done today, or would that have to be a separate process?
You can recommend that amendment if you wish to. I would note that I believe that that would require approval from the county health department. But that, you know, they have to get a approval from the county health department for their restaurant anyway.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question about this because I've spent a lot of time looking at this, and that actually didn't occur to me. But like, I also see a lot of, say, like a street dog vendor who's preparing these in a spot that's like adjacent, but like in the street. That would, would or would not be permissible with the way we have this set up currently?
You mean in conjunction with the restaurant or bar?
Like adjacent to the parklet? Not in the parklet, but like right next to it?
But do you mean that would constitute the food that was consumed in the parklet? Or is it just a separate operation?
Would that be, would that be considered like prohibited food preparation under this? Or is this specifically about you have inside the actual parklet itself?
I believe that would not be permitted under this. I'm just thinking that food vendors per se on the, in the public right of way, there's a whole separate section of the municipal code that deals with that issue, and they need to get a permit from the police department. So if, I'm not sure quite how that would work. If they wanted to serve those things that were cooked there, I think they could probably do that, but they'd still have to get the permit from the police department to have a food vendor in the public right of way.
Okay, so there's nothing that's before us right now that would prohibit that from happening? It's just affected by a different part of the code?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Wax, the sidewalk and street vendor regulations are in Chapter 27 of Title V of the city's municipal code, if you want to review them. But that's what covers, I think, the type of use that you're talking about.
Commissioner Moore, go ahead.
So, yeah, Commissioner Ghazani's comment about the outdoor preparation, I think is actually, if we do have the opportunity to recommend these modifications and strike that Section E, it brought to mind something where I'd actually seen a cafe in Emeryville, you know, probably unaware of what was allowed or not, and they were doing a special like Mother's Day type barbecue where they kind of rolled out a grill to their sidewalk dining. And they were kind of just barbecuing outside, and it was a really wonderful event that was drawing a lot of people. And yeah, it seems like a worthwhile thing to do if we have the opportunity to add that
Well, certainly. I mean, this is the public hearing before the planning commission, and the whole reason for having planning commission review of planning regulation amendments before they go to the city council is for your input and recommendations. And if you want to recommend modifications, that is absolutely in your purview. So we're looking at Section 91504E. There shall be no food preparation or storage in the sidewalk area, sidewalk cafe or parklet area. Right? Well, if that's the will of the commission, if that's included in your motion, we will pass that recommendation on to the city council.
Great. Commissioner Wax, go ahead.
So I actually have a number of comments on this. I want to thank Charlie for answering a bunch of questions that I sent him about midday yesterday, and the answers were definitely prompt and enlightening. The reason I have been giving this a really hard look is that for basically the last year, parklets have been a really big part of my social life. And so I've had a lot of opportunity to see them in action and like see, you know, the way they're operating. I've certainly been to parklets in Emeryville, but there's a, you know, there's a much more robust parklet scene in, you know, our surrounding urban area. And I find myself, you know, pretty frequently at Oakland establishments where they're operating under a different regime than this. One of the most notable differences is the fact that like they did not prohibit bars, taverns, and lounges from being able to operate parklets before, which I think was the correct way to go. I was asking a friend of mine about this last night if they understood any of the logic about that, and what they were telling me was that, you know, it had to do with basically, you know, pandemic consideration, what people should and shouldn't be doing. That logic is basically to me the same as saying like, don't hand out condoms at school because kids aren't supposed to be having sex. Like either the bar should be allowed to operate, and they should be given a parklet so people can be more safe. And the public comment really touched on this because, just because a lot of us, including myself, are like gradually operating as though things are more normal, does not mean that the, you know, virus that is circulating out there is not still highly dangerous to a lot of people. And so, you know, I think it's really good that we're moving forward and away from that because as much as, I understand that like not everybody has the most positive view of, you know, nightlife and the operation of bars and lounges and nightclubs, but they are a really essential place for socialization and community for a lot of people. I count myself among those. And right now in Emeryville, outside of my immediate neighborhood, which is, you know, right near the border of Oakland, there really isn't much of a nightlife in Emeryville. So if you're looking for the kinds of community that you will find at these places, you're going to have to leave town, and I find that pretty unfortunate. And so I believe that, you know, certainly as someone who is, you know, active in Bay Area nightlife and understands it somewhat, that it is, you know, incumbent on me to, you know, when I see regulations like this come in front of us, you know, ask, are we creating a regulatory environment that is like friendly to the further development of a diverse and healthy and positive nightlife for our community, especially as it continues to grow and we have, you know, this huge development arc coming into the core district of Emeryville, which is going to inject a lot of twenty-somethings into our community, whether they're working here, living here, you know, hopefully both, that they also are able to find their places of community here and not be forced to go to Oakland, go to San Francisco, go to Berkeley in order to, you know, spend time with people their age, spend time with their community. And so I'm very pleased to see us going in the right direction, but I do still have some quibbles about some of the ways that this is being implemented. The biggest one, well, not the biggest one. I think the simplest one for me is 9-5.1505, alcoholic beverages. C is a requirement that there be a physical barrier with, you know, no more than four-foot opening. This is not something that is required in Oakland. I looked up not only their existing regulations, but what they're proposing in order to make those permanent. With all of the parklets and all of the nightlife that Oakland has, with the basis of that experience, as they're looking to make these things permanent, they're also not implementing this at this point. And it seems like a minor thing, but it's important to remember that these are like very small spaces. And so, you know, if you were to sit down and you were to draw out a proportional and rightly sized parklet, and you were to have it enclosed on three sides, as they should be, but only three sides, and you lay out the furniture and you think from a venue owner's perspective, I want to make, you know, I want to accommodate comfortably the maximum number of people in this parklet that I can. And all of a sudden you draw a fence in there, you realize that you're taking a lot of space, proportionally a lot of space away to create pathing for people to get in and out and also like kind of squeeze past each other probably to where it's less comfortable. And it's also less accessible because you have that one opening where if you have a completely open front parklet, if someone is coming in there and wants to spend time there in a wheelchair, they can get in at any point as opposed to having to route themselves through, you know, through a single opening. So like that's something that I think is completely unnecessary. And I do understand the motivation for it, but I just don't agree with it. I don't think that it particularly benefits anyone. I think that it is more to like ease the minds of people who may be less comfortable with, you know, public consumption of alcohol and having, you know, the people who are drinking like in kind of a pen might seem nicer. But I've spent a lot of time at these places, and in my opinion, we should put a little bit more faith into, you know, the people running the venue, the bouncer at the venue, to like make sure that people are behaving in an appropriate manner and being where they're supposed to be. I just took a trip to Seattle last month, and like the moment you're in the wrong place with your drink, you're having a bouncer yell at you to get right back where you were supposed to be. These people are professionals, and they are interested in keeping their venue open, keeping their venue right with the city, and making sure that there is no trouble. And there are so many ways, I could go on about it for quite a long time, actually, because it's something that I'm passionate about, in which the lack of a robust nightlife is really a detriment to our community. And so, you know, if we have something that doesn't have a clear benefit but does have a clear cost in this that makes, you know, our drinking and dining establishments, you know, and their adjacent parklets like less competitive, less comfortable, you know, experience, then that's something that we should get rid of. So I recommend that we get rid of C under alcoholic beverages entirely. I understand the reasoning, but I just don't think that, I don't think that it's worth it. And while there are a lot of good reasons to do things differently from, you know, our surrounding cities, I don't think that this is one of them. I do have further comments, but I would cede the Florida David because they are related to a different aspect of this.
Thanks, Commissioner Wax. I actually find very little to disagree with what you just said. In fact, I'm glad you brought our attention. I hadn't scrutinized the 1505 alcoholic beverages very closely. And yeah, I don't, you know, I would fully agree with C. And also, why are we requiring the full meal service, right? But I would pose this question also, like what are the, are there downsides that I'm overlooking? But right now, I'm, you know, I'm kind of 100% on board with what Commissioner Wax just said.
Charlie, would you like to respond to any of those points?
Well, I did want to ask a clarifying question of Commissioner Wax, but I think I know the answer, which is, did you wish to eliminate the barrier requirement for just for parklets or also for sidewalk cafes? Because the provision for sidewalk cafes has been in there for many years, and what we are doing with these amendments is just adding parklets to that. So I was wondering if do you just want to scratch the addition of parklets, or do you want to eliminate the existing requirement for a barrier for sidewalk cafe as well?
I think I'm a lot less familiar with the operation of sidewalk cafes than parklets, so I don't know that I have a strong opinion on that. It's, I certainly think that like some of the, you know, space and accessibility issues are still in place, but the way they operate is something that I'm much less familiar with.
Okay, thank you. Let me just say on the issue of the barrier, it is not required by state law. We checked with the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control when we first adopted these regulations about eight or nine years ago. And I was quite surprised to hear that they didn't have any requirements for any kind of physical separation around sidewalk cafe that served alcohol. I just assumed that they did, but they didn't. So we, I discussed it with them, and I told them that, well, we were considering requiring a barrier around sidewalk cafes that serve alcohol. And they were thrilled, and they thanked me profusely and said, oh, that's great. Thank you very much for making our job easier, but it's not required. I'm not sure why that makes their job easier. But the ABC was in full support of that provision. But again, as I said, it's not a state law, and apparently Oakland is not doing it. I don't know about other cities. I don't think we would run afoul of any legal I don't think we would run afoul of any legal requirements if we were to eliminate that provision. Oh, concerning the meal service, that was really just kind of a policy call. What we did when we adopted these temporary regulations in 2020, we added bars to being able to have sidewalk cafes and parklets then. Before that, they weren't allowed to. But I guess there was just a general feeling that they, we didn't just want bars out on the sidewalk, so therefore they should be able to serve meals and, or they should be required to serve meals. And what we did was to mirror the state ABC requirements for a type, I think it's forty-one or forty-seven liquor license. Forty-one is beer and wine and forty-seven is distilled spirits and beer and wine. And those are both for eating and drinking establishments. And the ABC does require meals to be served if you have that type of a liquor license. So that was what we were trying to sort of mimic. But there isn't really a reason for not allowing a bars type liquor license. I don't know the number of that. Other than to say that if you had a bar with a parklet or a sidewalk cafe under their ABC liquor license, I don't believe minors would be allowed to be in that parklet or that sidewalk cafe. So if they serve meals and have the type of liquor license that allows that, you know, then minors would be allowed.
Commissioner Simons, I see your hand up, but, and Commissioner Wax, tell me if you want to respond at all. I just had one question about that. What, I mean, thinking about like a beer garden, for example, or a brewery, oftentimes there's no food served there, but minors are allowed. Is that a different type of situation? Like is it because it's a sidewalk cafe?
Well, there's, you know, about a hundred different types of ABC licenses. I don't know what that would be. Ones that I've seen have had food also available. So I don't know. We'd have to look at the details of what the ABC license said, but in general, if alcohol is served and nothing else is served, minors typically are not allowed. So as far as I know, but that might be an overgeneralization. I'm not familiar with the exact circumstances of what you're describing.
Okay, so Commissioner Wax, let me just ask you if you had any responses to Charlie's response.
I, I do want to dig further into the food service issue, but I'd like to let Henry make his comments first.
Great, okay. Commissioner Simons, go ahead. Or Vice Chair Simons, sorry.
Thank you so much, Chair. I love, I think just my general thoughts about the alcohol rules is I'd suggest we implement these laws as written. I think I'm concerned about minors having access to alcohol, some sort of fence seems good. And I'm also very concerned about ADA access along the sidewalk. I know when I've had a beer or two, I may not sit in quite the area that I'm expected to. And I know many people have more beers than that, especially that are delicious and we build breweries and bars. So I think, you know, having, you know, clear where the parklet is, clear where the sidewalk is seems quite important to me. Just wanted to throw my thoughts out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Simons. Commissioner Wax, do you want to go ahead with any of your other points or responses?
Um, I, okay, so when I, when I got done with the minor point about the fence, I, I did want to get into food service and here we are, we're already bringing it up. This is, this is really complicated because I, I think I do understand, you know, why, why we would want this. However, you know, when, again, researching, you know, what Oakland's regulations were, having seen a lot of their parklets in practice and knowing that they definitely, you know, overwhelmingly have food service available from a food truck or, you know, street dogs or something like that, it seems to be overwhelmingly demand based and it's not like a hundred percent of the time that they're open. And it seems to work out just fine. And so this is another area where I feel like, I feel a little bit less strongly because I think there are perhaps stronger arguments for like compelling food service, but I would actually be in favor of modifying our requirement to, to either they are serving food, you know, from their own full kitchen, or they have the contract it, or if they do not have either of those, that they make the parklet available for outside food. I know that there is a nearby bar that doesn't have any kind of food service and they just let people bring in whatever food that they want. And it is to the bar's interest. A, intoxicated people like to eat. B, bars don't like people getting drunk too fast. It's bad for business in a bunch of different ways. People get drunk too fast and like they have to stop serving them, or they have to kick them out because they start acting dumb. So it's generally in their best interest to have some food available, but what we have here is a requirement that they must take responsibility for that and they cannot operate their parklet without having that food present. And I think that that is unnecessary. And if it were, if it were up to me, I would, I would eliminate that or at least go to, you know, the step of saying, well, if you're not going to take responsibility for food, you're going to allow people to bring outside food in, otherwise you can't operate the parklet. But it goes all the way down to saying that like you must have food service anytime the parklet is open. And, you know, in practice, a lot of times these places are being served by, you know, by a food truck or street vendor who is probably, you know, there, like there's one food truck vendor that I know that, that is also working at a restaurant. And any food truck vendor is like really making their business happen by working a lot of hours and, you know, saying, well, okay, this bar opens up at five and you have to be there at five, otherwise we can't open the parklet, is the sort of regulation that people are kind of, kind of like roll their eyes at in practice and say, well, sorry, the food truck isn't here, so you can't sit over there with your drink like you could if the food truck was over there. And so like, those, those are my feelings towards food service. Again, I was not able to find any evidence either in practice or in regulation. I'm not the best at researching municipal code that Oakland requires this or that they're adding this to their regulations, you know, post the like COVID emergency explosion of parklets when they're looking to make these things permanent. They haven't seen the necessity with all of the super active parklets that they have to add that back in. And so I, I again, would be in favor of, of not requiring it.
Lots to think about here. Any other comments any commissioners want to commit at this point? Yeah, Commissioner Henry, go ahead.
Yes, I was going to mention that I think the, the issue of the barrier or maybe I even wouldn't use the term barrier, but a definition of what is the place for the sidewalk cafe or park, parklet is, is much clearer. I mean, it's, it's very clear definition because it's pretty much the curb on is defined and, and that space is, is recognizable. It's actually the sidewalk cafe that I'd be more concerned about because like looking at those pictures of Los Mollis, it's, a lot of times sidewalk cafes are on the far side of the, of the establishment. And then you have a walking space between the establishment and the sidewalk cafe. In that picture that was shown, the cafe is against the building. And so the walking path was not so clear in terms of a public way and how is it maintained? And even where is it? Because I also spend quite a bit of time in Oakland establishments and, and, and particularly old Oakland and the former liege in the district and all that sort of thing. And I've seen a lot of instances where the public way is not maintained and people just completely clog the sidewalk. And I think that's a problem. Not that I would expect the kind of entities we have in Emeryville to be doing that because these are more clubs and bars, lively clubs. But I do think that a sidewalk cafe space should be clear, or at least the sidewalk should be clear. Where is the public way? Is it the right width? Can a person in a wheelchair easily get by and through these spaces? And I, and I think that, that issue is, is fairly important and maybe it's not necessarily a barrier, but even a marking on the sidewalk would help to, to, or maybe it's a definition of a barrier. So just to be clear, where, where can one walk? Where, where should one not be putting a table and chair?
Great, thank you. Commissioner Moore.
I think Commissioner Henry raises a pretty good point and something was unclear in my head and now I meant to ask, maybe Charlie, you know, the, the distinction between sidewalk cafe and sidewalk dining, is that, is there any overlap between those? Because we have a lot of sidewalk dining where you don't have these barriers, but what would you call a sidewalk cafe? And are there any in Emeryville? Because I don't recall any barriers on the sidewalk.
Well, sidewalk cafe is a defined term in the regulations. Sidewalk dining is not defined term. We have kind of generically referred to all of these things as outdoor dining. The parklets, the sidewalk cafes, and the outdoor tables and chairs on private property. ordinance number twenty dash oh one six just generically refers to all of that as outdoor dining. I have not heard the term sidewalk dining used. I would also note that the barrier is only required if the sidewalk cafe is serving alcohol. So if it's not serving alcohol, it's not required to have the barrier. But they are required to maintain a minimum of four feet or ADA clearance. And I believe it says or a greater width if determined necessary by the city.
Wait, so then in the picture of Los Mollis, you're saying Los Mollis, since there was no barrier there, they're not allowed to serve drinks out on those tables? Is that right?
Not supposed to, that's correct.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I don't want to, my intention is not to out them, right? But I've, I've enjoyed drinks, you know, and I, yeah, I think it was a wonderful experience. I think this conversation is, is really making me lean towards, I, I just don't think there's a compelling reason, you know, for that barrier. And also the, the full meal service. I, it's, yeah, I really concur with Commissioner Wax on that. And go ahead, Commissioner Wax, sorry, you had your hand up.
Oh, oh, you're good. Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the right of way issue because like I, I definitely agree that it can be an issue, but I feel like it is, it is as Commissioner Henry, you know, said, kind of venue dependent, like, you know, tonight, whenever we get done with this, I'm, you know, going to a venue in the city that is always, they don't have a parklet, they don't allow you to take drinks outside, but that sidewalk is clogged because people loiter outside. They loiter outside in, in large numbers and, and, you know, it sort of has nothing to do with the facilities, it's just like the nature of the venue. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a lovely spot to be, you know, in my opinion, just people that I love spending time with, but boy, they do clog the right of way.
Where's the after party? Are we coming? Great, okay. Any other comments?
I have one.
Yes, go for it.
My thirty issue with this categorically. Where is it? Nine dash five dot one five oh four subsection I. I believe that ninety-nine percent of the time barring amplified sound is appropriate, but I think that it would be good, especially because probably my favorite parklet and biggest success story of parklets in my own experience is a place that does have amplified sound overwhelmingly. They don't have it overwhelmingly, the location should not have it. But in this one location, it's the right place for it, it's the right venue for it, they have amplified sound outside. I believe that it should enter the public discussion whether or not a mechanism should be created similar to a cabaret license so that someone can at least apply to do that. And, you know, if it's the appropriate thing, then instead of, you know, someone saying, hey, can we do this and us going through a big, long cycle of saying, well, you know, we need to add this to the regulations, having the mechanism in place for them to be able to come forward and apply and be approved or not. And, you know, based on, you know, my understanding of the geography of Emeryville, I think overwhelmingly anybody that might apply for it would be turned down. But should the opportunity come up, I don't want it to take any longer for that to happen than necessary. So then being barred with the provision that, you know, and a license can be applied for, again, similar to a cabaret license, would I think be appropriate?
If I may respond, I think it would be a cabaret license. Actually, I'm not sure if a cabaret license can be obtained for the public sidewalk, but assuming that it can be, I think that it would be, a cabaret license would be the appropriate mechanism. Because there's a review procedure for that and that can be approved, you know, separate from the sidewalk cafe and parklet, can be denied if it's not deemed appropriate or approved if it is deemed appropriate. So that I think would be the appropriate mechanism.
Great. Commissioner Henry, go ahead.
Yes, I think the amplified sound is a big, big issue and I would not be willing to entertain allowing that unless there was some kind of study and or specific recommendations, meaning decibel levels, hours, locations, procedure for approval. In other words, this is not a simple thing where we should just say, yes, it's allowed, but only after a pretty rigorous study because again, I've, I've seen this a lot too in Oakland, where I know there's a lot of amplified sound that disturbs people that live over, over, over bars. And so, you know, and it very much does have to do with things like decibel levels and, and et cetera. So this is a real, this, in order to, for this to be approved, I think it has to have a very specific rigorous analysis and proposal. And at this point, I am, you know, we're not there.
Okay, so just to summarize, I have noted down four slash five things that I've heard about. Number one is considering the food preparation, nine dash five point fifteen oh four E, whether that should be struck, removed. Another one is around the barriers and then slash the openings. So I think there's the barrier issue and then also Commissioner Wax, you mentioned the provision about having openings no more than four feet wide. So that's one or two issues there. The third is food service, nine dash five point fifteen oh five E, and then also the amplified sound aspect. It feels to me like we're starting to get closer to someone making a motion. Is anyone ready to make a motion or should we continue our discussion on any or all of these issues? Commissioner Moore, go ahead.
Yes, I was waiting for all the comments, but I am prepared to make a motion where in nine five fifteen oh five, we would, so we would adopt the modified regulations striking C and E in the alcoholic beverage provision and also striking E in nine five fifteen oh four regarding food prep. If it gets too complicated, we could also consider doing something where we see, you know, for each of those three removals, right, do we have a major, maybe we have a majority of commissioners on like two out of the three or something like that could be reasonable. But otherwise I would, you know, go for all three.
Okay, can you just mention those one more time? Sorry, I was trying to follow along.
Yeah, I, I think it's the same ones you mentioned. So nine dash five dot fifteen oh five alcoholic beverages, striking a C and E, that's on the barriers and the full meal service restrictions. And nine dash five dot fifteen oh four for standards, striking E regarding the food preparation restriction.
Okay, great. And before, I mean, that basically sounded like a motion. I just want to mention that Commissioner Dram, you haven't made any comments yet and I just wanted to check whether there's anything you wanted to add.
Yes, there are a couple of things mentioned here. These are all good for the city and community. The only thing like we need to make sure we consider the safety and also the accessibility. That's, that's very my main concern. Other than that, adding the music with a decibel review or whatever regulation does perfect. Having a kind of barrier that the business knows this is the level they can Having a kind of barrier that the business knows this is the level they can upgrade, I think that's necessary, especially for ADA access. And providing food and making food on their parklet would be nice. I'm not sure about the sideways cafes. Maybe we can just wait for the parklets. Other than that, I don't have any comments. I think it's good because there are different items, maybe we can go over one by one and vote on them. Then that's gonna be easier and see which one it can pass, which one can't.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ghazani, did you get in all of your comments?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Charlie, do you have advice on how to handle, how to organize this?
Sure. I think it sounds like there's not support for the amplified sound, you know, deleting that provision. It sounds like there is more generally for these other three things, although it's mixed depending on the commissioner. I see that Commissioner Wax has a comment or a question?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm absolutely not in favor or was not proposing eliminating provision I under standards, but merely to like allow for a review based process that would provide a license. And my view is that that license would be seldom if ever given, but just that like should the, you know, the right place and time for one, you know, be provided, that we have it in the books that it's possible.
Commissioner Mora, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think we're all on board with the amplified sound, this not being the place to modify that and maybe a cabaret license is required. But before we did start, if we were gonna start like some type of piecemeal voting on striking out provisions, I did want to get some clarification from Commissioner Dram. Because, just to make sure we're talking about the same thing here. Because he mentioned the importance of, you know, having, I guess, I wanted to better understand the concern about the barriers because I think what we're talking about with the alcoholic beverages is this fenced in aspect to the parklet where it's, things get kind of, it's hard to move in and out from the parklet. And I just wanted to, maybe you could elaborate on your concern there, Commissioner Dram, just so we're all on the same page.
Yes, if you're talking about the parklet, the, around the parklet, I think we should have the barrier. That's mostly for safety. To the sidewalk, I don't think we would need that. But for the sidewalk cafe, that's like even like two side barrier is enough. Again, on the sidewalk is not, is not necessary. And that's mostly for ADA. Because a person who is on a wheelchair needs to have the right of way to pass. And that's something that defines the business that this is your scope of sidewalk you can use. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good clarification because we are talking about, it's still gonna, the parklet will still be bounded on three sides. The question is, does it need to be bound on a, the, the, between, on the fourth side with the sidewalk, with a, like another, like essentially a fourth barrier? You're kind of making a cage with then a, like an opening on one side, right?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be like a cage. On the sidewalk cafe, I think the two side is enough, again, we don't need to make a cage.
Or the three sides, right? The three sides.
This side?
Oh, sorry, sidewalk cafe or parklet?
It's next to the restaurant, okay, this is like a bar. So if this is a restaurant, this is like two side, you're talking about third side. I think the second side or third side doesn't need it, but the two side is necessary.
Okay.
I will note that the way the regulations are drafted, the barrier is only required at all if there is alcohol in the beverage section.
Right.
Chair Chafe?
Yes.
If I may suggest a process?
Please.
In the general plan update way back twenty thousand nine, as you can imagine, there were lots of issues that had to be debated and addressed. And we had sixteen members on the steering committee that recommended approval. And believe it or not, we got unanimous consensus by all sixteen of them after a couple of years of discussion on all of the various complicated issues that were in the general plan. And the way that worked was that we had like straw votes on all of these different issues. And people would, obviously some people weren't happy with the votes on some of those issues, but the facilitator asked people to consider whether or not they could live with it. And if they could live with it, then they should consider supporting it. So if someone absolutely could not live with any circumstances with a particular provision, then they would vote against the thing. But as long as people, it wasn't so onerous that they just couldn't live with it, then they should support the plan. And obviously, everybody didn't support everything in the plan. But they all took that advice to heart and said, well, there isn't anything in here that I absolutely cannot live with, so I will vote to support this plan. And that's how we got to consensus on that issue. I would suggest that in this case, we do a straw poll on these three items, food preparation, the barriers and the food service. And see where we are on that. And then have a motion, a formal motion to recommend approval of these regulations. And if there is consensus on these different items, then include those. And if there aren't, isn't consensus on one of them or two of them or whatever, then don't include that one. And see if that works.
Thank you, that sounds great. Okay, so let me just check if there are any further comments before we do a straw poll. Commissioner Dram, did you want to add anything?
No.
Very good.
Okay, great. Seeing no comments, yes, seeing a comment. Commissioner Henry, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't think we need to have a consensus on these items in order to advance it. You know, I don't, I think a majority is adequate or maybe a super majority. But, you know, consensus is a very high bar to achieve.
Well, I was only suggesting that because if you have a majority of, you know, on one item and a majority on another item, they may not be the same commissioners. And if you could get to a vote on the whole thing where you don't have enough commissioners to pass the motion. But that's, you know, that's unlikely.
Okay.
Yeah, an alternative approach, which I think is what Commissioner Henry is suggesting, Chair Chafe, would be to just someone make a motion with all of these provisions in it and see if it passes.
True.
So, up to you, you honorably speak.
I think what I would prefer to do right now is a straw poll on each of the three we're considering, just to see where we stand. And then if someone would like to make a motion after that poll, then I would welcome a motion. And if someone else wants to make a competing motion, then that would be great too. And we'll go from there. So let's do a straw poll on food preparation. So this would be in favor of striking the language in nine five point one five zero four E, which says there shall be no food preparation or storage in the sidewalk cafe. So if you would like to, if you're in favor of striking this language, removing it, can we do just a show of hands, Charlie, is that okay?
I think so, Kristi, is that okay?
Okay, great, so please raise your hand if you would like to strike that language. All right, so I'm seeing everybody.
That's unanimous.
Yes. All right, we'll do the same now for striking nine dash five point one five zero five C. And this is around having a physical barrier such as a railing fence or planter that's at least thirty inches high and with openings no more than four feet wide. So if you would like to strike this language, then please raise your hand. Great, that's five.
Do you wish to sentence, I pressed your sentence, I couldn't see if your hand was raised or not.
No. My hand was not raised.
Okay, and it looked like yours was not in, Chair Chafe.
Mine is not, I actually have like slightly a different language that I would like to mention. Kind of in the middle. And then for food service, this is nine dash five point one five zero five E, that the sidewalk cafe or parklet shall maintain full food service and shall operate. Yes, go ahead.
There are actually multiple areas, probably more than I even have marked down. There's also nine dash five dot one five oh four A, which requires only if it provides full meal service either from its own kitchen or by contract with another vendor. There may be other spots I'm not thinking of right now too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, when, depending on how this turns out, when we forward your recommendation to the city council, we'll make sure to go through and, you know, modify so it's all internally consistent.
Great, yeah, thanks for putting that out. Okay, so this is basically to take out any provisions that have to do with the fact that a sidewalk cafe or parklet must maintain full food service at all times.
In order to serve alcohol.
In order to serve alcohol, thank you. So if you are in favor of striking this language, please raise your hand.
I see six.
I see six as well. Okay, great, so I think that was really helpful. I'll just mention right now that the one thing for the barriers and opening piece, you know, I was thinking that maybe we could think about alternative language where right now it says a substantial physical barrier. And to me, it seems like there's some middle ground there where you could have a delineation of some sort, like a delineation or marker. So it could be something that's on the ground, a mark on the ground or something that's movable. So that was the reason I didn't vote to fully strike it. Because I feel like that might help with some of the ADA concerns while also still allowing some flexibility.
May I just clarify, Chair Chafe, the barrier is only required if alcohol is served. Are you suggesting that a delineation be provided whether or not alcohol is served?
No, just for alcohol.
Okay.
As a substitute for the barrier. So I see two hands, Commissioner Ghazani, go ahead.
I like what you're articulating, Chair Chafe. I think maybe we could just say that that third part where we're talking about, where there was the width restriction and everything, I think it should be adequate to say that it's just clearly delineated. You know? So there's no ambiguity that you are either inside or outside the area you're supposed to be in and we can trust that enforcement mechanisms or people on their own will be aware that I am in the right place or I'm not.
Thank you, okay, next I see Commissioner Mora.
Yeah, so just one clarification. I think Commissioner Henry made a good point earlier about the, I think it was Commissioner Henry, talking about the distinction, you know, where the sidewalk starts in the parklet is there's kind of a natural delineation in that. So that's why I don't personally think it's necessary to have further delineation. I just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wax?
Yeah, so I was thinking the same thing and then I realized that the language you were using includes sidewalk cafe, which would actually eliminate the like excellent need for a barrier around a sidewalk cafe as long as it was delineated, is that your intent?
Sorry, can you say that again? So right now, so this is just for alcoholic beverages, so.
Right.
So, yeah, so what you're saying is that right now a sidewalk cafe would be required to have a barrier and then that would be removed, is that your?
That's what I understand from what Charlie clarified earlier.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, and so you do, you do mean to include sidewalk cafes and not just parklets and that? Okay, all right, in that case, obviously like a sidewalk cafe doesn't necessarily have like a curb surrounding it, so.
Yes, yeah, and that was actually part of my thinking on that, yeah, thank you.
If I may just clarify, just to make sure I understand what you're saying. So we would not, under this proposal, we would not eliminate the provision about a barrier around a sidewalk cafe or parklet that is serving alcohol, but we would modify it just instead of a physical barrier to require a clear delineation.
Correct, that was what I was going for, yeah, that was my suggestion.
Do you wish to take a straw poll on that proposal?
Yes, let me call on Commissioner Mora first and then we'll do that.
I just want to better understand the, because, you know, I guess there's some, to me, you know, with the parklet at least, you know, there's the clear delineation with the sidewalk. And taking that Los Molas sidewalk dining example, you know, it's been going on for, you know, quite a while now and there's the tables, the chairs, people sit there, maybe they have their beverage. I feel like there is this kind of implicit, you know, it's kind of contained in there. And I'm wondering what would further delineation look like? Because if it's like, you know, tape on the sidewalk, you can start going down some silly directions and I'm not sure if we want to start prescribing that.
Yeah, no, I mean, honestly, I think what we've discovered is that maybe this establishment that we've been referring to is not in compliance with the current code. So, you know, basically it wouldn't, I wouldn't see it as being too onerous on them. I think, you know, we could leave it flexible enough, but with this idea that if there are concerns about access, that it is marked in some way where someone can easily point and say, look, this is where you should be, this is where you should not be. And right now it sounds like that's not happening. So it seems like there could be a flexible mechanism for making sure it does happen in the future.
I will say that on sidewalk cafe and parklet applications, they are required to submit a plan. You know, the, are to show the dimensions of the clear four foot minimum accessible path on that plan. And then that plan is what gets approved. That's not to say they can't move the tables around after their plan is approved so that they aren't keeping that four feet clear. But if they do that, then they're violating the terms of their permit. So this would be just sort of an extra safeguard to make sure they stay where they were supposed to stay.
Yeah, thank you, and you know, what I'm picturing is like, you know, it could be a marking, it could be tape, it could also be like a movable, what do you call those things, like a rope thing between two stationary objects where it's, you know, it's not so permanent, but it gives an indication. Commissioner Wax?
I just want to note that one positive aspect of using the clear delineation language instead of just eliminating this language entirely is that even with a parklet where you see the curb, I think a lot of venue owners are going to read that and what we're going to get back is a safety enhancement when people are transitioning from the sidewalk to the parklet where like they might be reminded by something bright on the ground that they're transitioning into it. And, you know, it will serve as a little bit more of a reminder like where they're supposed to be with their beverages. So I favor it.
Okay, great, and Commissioner Mora?
Yeah, and not to beat a dead horse on this topic, I think, you know, Charlie made the point about these areas being clearly delineated on the plans. In practice, they do seem pretty clearly delineated and I'm a little apprehensive about, well, I think the rope barrier might actually be just another, we might be back where we started with where people feel kind of fenced in. And the thing on the ground, it kind of feels a little, a little bit unnecessary, maybe unsightly and I'm just not sure what the value proposition is of it. So I would still personally, maybe we could do a straw poll of this modification and also see if the people who voted previously still agree with their first straw poll position because that's where I would be.
Great, yeah, great idea. Let me just ask Commissioner Ghazani for comments first.
Yeah, to me, I think clear delineation can be a somewhat flexible term. I don't think you not need to draw a line on the ground or have a rope barrier, but if you at least know where the corner points are, then anybody can, you know, somebody from the establishment can say you can't go beyond the line that you would imagine between those two points. You know, and that to me, it should be something where you can just, it doesn't have to be a continuous line is I guess what I was saying. You know, everybody's able to see two dots at the corners of the acceptable area and go like, oh, I'm inside of that area or I'm outside. And I think that should be adequate, at least in my book.
Okay, great, thanks everyone. Okay, so let's do a straw poll. So I guess this would be just on. So I guess this would be just on taking, instead of striking nine dash five point one five zero five C for a physical barrier, if serving alcoholic beverages, instead, we would remove the part that says substantial physical barrier and the examples, and instead say that the sidewalk cafe or parklet shall be clearly delineated, separated from the adjacent sidewalk by clear delineation, something, I mean, we can modify the language, but I think you get the intent. So if you're in favor of that language, then please raise your hand. Okay, so I see five, five hands. So at this point, I think we have an idea of where things stand. Does anyone want to go ahead and make a motion?
I could make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, my motion would be to approve the regulations and strike the, all three of the clauses we've been discussing, the C and E from the alcoholic beverages for the barrier and full meal service, and E regarding the food prep.
So you're not including the physical delineation, you're just striking?
I'm not, I'm not, right? And I guess this is where things get tricky, right? Because like, maybe that would pass too, right? And maybe there could be a follow-on that says re-add delineation as another motion.
So I think, Charlie, if I remember correctly, what can happen now is someone else can make a substitute motion, and then we vote on the substitute motion? Is that correct?
That's right. You have a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded, and so now anyone else can make a substitute motion, and if that gets a second, then we vote on the substitute motion first. If that passes, then the original motion dies. If it does not pass, then we go back to voting on the original motion.
Okay, great. Commissioner Ghazani?
Sure, I'll make a second motion identical to what Commissioner Mora proposed, but with the addition of clear delineation.
And I'll second that.
So are we ready to vote on the substitute motion?
I believe so. Go ahead.
All right, on the substitute motion, are we all clear what it is? Yes, okay. Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghazani?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chaff?
Aye.
Well, the second, the substitute motion passes unanimously. So the recommendation to the city council will be to adopt these amendments with the, let's see, the elimination of fifteen oh four E concerning food preparation, the modification of fifteen oh five C, replacing physical barrier with a clear delineation from the sidewalk, and striking fifteen oh five E concerning food service with alcohol in the parklet. And I will note that we will make other amendments as necessary in order to make this all internally consistent.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, everyone. I thought that was a really, really useful, interesting discussion. Great, so now we move to agenda item number nine, planning commissioner comments. Any comments? Okay. Seeing no comments, then we will adjourn this meeting at eight oh six.
Thank you, everybody. That was a really good discussion.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye.